Good evening, and welcome to the Night School of Media. It's Monday, August 22nd, 2022. Six o'clock, we're in Susan Tully Life League Building, the 1887 building. I'd call the meeting to order an asterisk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scaram?
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue, and I will note that tonight's meeting has been noticed per state statute. But we don't have any questions.
Yeah, so we have two emails to read, or two, yeah, emails and a letter. The first one is from Joe Leahy, and he said, "As a Elkhorn class and 91 grad, I want to express to you how impressed with your football program. My son is currently on the fifth grade team, and I can see the day-to-day progress he makes through the positive coaching he gets. He is excited for practice, is learning to compete, and is also having a blast. We both know that in the end, that is what it's all about. The reason for my email is while sitting around with friends, we got to reminiscing about our Elkhorn High School football days, not about our successes or failures, but the lifelong lessons we learned from my coaches." The two coaches we talked about were Paul Yankee and Dean Wilson. Those two men did so much for our school and community, we wondered if there was anything in the works as far as some memorials or something like that. "I, along with many others, would like to voice our support for anything the district sees appropriate. These two men were the base of the Elkhorn football this today. My boys would be blessed to have such positive influences as those two were to me and so many others. And if there is any fundraising to do for such an already overdue honor, I'd be the first in line to help out. Thanks for taking time to read this." Joe Leahy. And then I also have a communication from Mr. Martel that I'll put as community communication, because we don't have it as a gym item. But, Mr. Martel, do you want me to read it, or do you want to go ahead and read it?
You could read it, that's fine, that way it's public record, and everybody's gonna hear it for sure.
As a longtime resident of, and a representative for the Elkhorn community, as well as someone who had the distinct honor of coaching with two extraordinary men, I respectfully request that the Elkhorn Area School District support a plan of action to pay tribute to both Paul Yankee and Dean Wilson that appropriately recognizes their decades-long dedication to the thousands of athletes they coached, and celebrates their important and foundational commitment to the students and families of our community as a whole. Both Paul and Dean came to Elkhorn in the early 70s and quickly established a plaudible culture within the athletic realm and within the community overall, which still resonates today. The students, athletes, and community members who have the privilege of interacting with these men continue to carry on the lessons Paul and Dean imparted. Work hard, be honorable both in and out of the athletic arenas, realize that a team is stronger than any one individual, and be humble when you win and driven to do better when you lose. The impacts of Paul and Dean have made or deserving of recognition, honor on the field where they changed the lives of their athletes and of those who flock to cheer on Elkhorn athletes under their care. Because of what is insufficiently documented here, as well as the impact Paul and Dean had over the decades interactions with young athletes and fans of this community, I ask the Elkhorn Area School District in partnership with the board, coalition of alumni, and the community at large to support a plan that appropriately, permanently, and robustly recognizes and pays tribute to the foundations and accomplishments which these award-winning, state-recognized best coaches of our community built, supported, and lived through their actions, their words, and their hearts on the field of competition that changed so many lives. Respectfully, all due talk." That's all I have for the community communication.
Alright, so we move on to the retirement recognition. So we have a presentation.
We do. Okay. Oh, sorry.
Before you go to that.
We wanted to welcome back Ellen Leescher coming in for today's presentation as well. So we wanted to do a special recognition for Nancy for serving the Elkhorn Area School District for 49 years as an employee in the food service program. We were shocked she didn't want to do just one more. We have a nice round of applause, but we're already here for the school district. And we asked some of the staff, shared some of their comments, some of the funniest memories, laughing at all the questions from the children asking about the food. I started my day at the middle school for many, many, many years, or there's just too many, sorry. I would start, startled Nancy when I came in, so I would always come and stoping into the kitchen or call out her name to let her know I arrived, would laugh about it every day. Nancy was always up for a challenge, we worked together making fruit smoothies for the breakfast each week. I really feel, Ellen, you should go ahead and...
No, I'm getting too emotional.
Each week we had to increase how many we made, we laughed about how the kids would pass the word that they were available at breakfast, we always had great counts that day. Nancy always took pride when making their famous lasagna. It took at least three days to prepare, the kids and staff loved it. I know my kids talked about the smoothies part of it.
I made it a whole yesterday, but not quite so much.
Let's see, Joanne said that Nancy was always wanting to get the children to smile over cookies. Let's keep decorating frosting the hundreds of cookies. I remember slicing hundreds and hundreds of hot dogs and hamburger buns with Nancy at the high school. That was back in the day when we made them from scratch. She was always so pleasant to work with. Bill said, "I'd never forget my first year working at the district and witnessing the middle school food service operations. At that time, the middle school was a five-to-eight grade school with over 800 students, and the kitchen was half the size of the current now Jackson Elementary School kitchen. I am so impressed with the efficiency that Nancy and the kitchen staff were able to meet the needs of the students with a smiling face and weekend attitude."
At that time, I believe Nancy, we started lunch at 10:35 in the morning, it was almost six.
Yep.
What will you miss most about Nancy? And Ellen said, "I'll miss Nancy's attention to detail. When I asked her to do a catering event, she always produced professional results. After 49 years, she certainly earned that time. Nancy had the most years of perfect attendance of any employee I've ever had. That was so much appreciated, she took her job so seriously and very rarely missed work. Thank you, Nancy." What will you miss most? We had a staff member respond that Nancy was always so kind and had a smile on her face. She made getting a lunch a cheery experience. Thank you for your long service and hope you enjoy your retirement, cheers to you. Joanne said, "Talking about grandchildren, dogs, and gardens." And she said that Nancy, "I'll miss you greeting me every morning when I came into school. You were always there, bright and early, getting things ready with a smile on your face. I wish you all the best in retirement, enjoy your time with your family." Bill said, "I'll miss stopping over to the middle school kitchen and having a conversation with Nancy. In addition, she was always willing to help out whenever the need within the food service program. Forty-nine years as a middle school cook for Elkhorn Area School District is an amazing story. Thank you for your service, Nancy, enjoy your well-deserved retirement." And then we have a gift. Ellen, would you like to... I mean, Nancy, you would like to get a picture with you, Ellen, and the school board, perhaps, if we now come in here? I'll take that picture. Are we going on the inside of the brochure?
Sure.
Yes, yes, there in the middle.
No hiding. I was working on most of that.
I feel like we should all stop. We should all stop. Scare you anyway. Maybe we should stop for smoothie.
Thank you for being here and putting up with.
I'm glad to see you all again. Retirement is wonderful. You're always busy. I know, I don't think that, but I thought.
Forty-nine years, you don't see that.
And that's gonna be gone to a different world, too, probably.
We're thinking only one employee that were aware of German children. You know, much of the, out of the combination, tough, as she continues to coach. Daywork events, just whatever you ask.
Alright, next is approval of our board minutes, regular and closed session, that passed that closed session, regular session. Task to your agenda. I know we were all at both of them.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the August 8th, 2022, regular and closed sessions school board meeting, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving second to approve the minutes of the August 8th, 2022, regular and closed sessions school board meeting, as presented, any other comments?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Same. I don't have a closed session, so.
I'm sorry, Paul.
That's good.
Mr. Odom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
General Other Fund Bills, Mr. Truman. The General Other Fund Bills this evening covers checks number 146960 through 147093, wire transfers 142 to 150, ACH 043 to 061, and three voided checks, 146379, 146539, and 146933. Combined amount of $1,3,612.88. And then there was, the metal provides some additional information on several of the bills here. Board, back end, you probably know sort of a number of kind of summer maintenance kind of things that went through, and then as we're preparing for the start of the school year, a lot of supplies and materials.
Questions for Mr. Truman?
I have just a couple, and I'm gonna apologize if these have been asked before.
It's okay.
But from when it's an annual thing, I'm like, sometimes I just don't remember. So the CISA 12 WISE Dash Annual Fee, what is WISE Dash?
WISE Dash is a consortium of schools that supply information on student performance and different data. It's like analytical tool, kind of like forecast by, would that be?
Yeah, it's a, got a warehouse for testing data, attendance data, for us, with high school and middle school.
Yeah.
Compiles it all, puts it in the church.
Sure, okay. And then the Imagine Learning Online Programming, is that part of the website development, or what is? There's like eight pages.
It's always filling here.
Imagine Learning Online Programming?
Yeah.
Amy or Sarah, does that...
I'm on, I believe the Imagine Learning is the new name for the Edgenuity/Compass Odyssey Program. It tends to have a new name each year, and that's a K8 learning tool we use for reading and math that their math data feeds into, and then it creates that individualized learning path for each child.
So it's just a new, it's just a new name for it?
Exactly.
So that's why I didn't recognize it.
Right.
Okay.
Other questions?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of August 22nd, 2022. Check numbers 146960 to 147093, wire numbers 142 to 150, ACH numbers 043 to 061, and voided check numbers 146379, 146539, and 146933. In the combined amount of $1,3,612.88, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we moved in second to approve the general and other fund bills of August 22nd, 2022. Checks numbered 146960 to 147093, wire number 142 to 150, ACH numbers 043 to 061, and voided check numbers 146379, 146539, and 146933. In the combined amount of $1,3,612.88, as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Summer operations and maintenance report.
Traditionally, the board was, at this meeting, usually right before the school starts, supplied with a report, kind of the preparing of the buildings and some pictures and maintenance stuff that we did over the summer. I'm gonna turn it over to Eli, because he put together a presentation, and he's gonna talk a little bit more than simply summer projects, so Eli.
I guess. So this is the basic layout of five major projects we had this summer. They're pretty pricey, which is why they're only five, but they were, he done about the school. I'll start the first one, I want it to scroll down. So the Sukie Gym Roof was really bad shape, we had a couple of weeks when I started. You can see the original roof there and all the cracking and stuff, it's like, it's really pale and white down the other. The right-hand side, that's them dragging it off. It was pretty damp underneath, a lot of different areas, you know, it's holding water and heavy weights. And so on the left here is a new, new roof, nice and patched off. We got a couple of rainstorms already, haven't had any leaks, so we'll keep an eye on that. Obviously, every little large project like this, there's always room for things to fail a little bit, so hopefully get some decent storms, so we've got to test that roof out and then come out with patch for necessary. So that was a big one. One of the big ones I wanted to do is, we had, the high school had probably about 60% LED within the building. So this year, we completed all the 100% of the building. Inside, and the parking lot lights are now fully LED. And also, it's a huge difference, that's the gym, it really does brighten the area up. Plus, it's, we have T12s still in some of those areas, and it's pretty bad. So in change of this, we're gonna hopefully see a little bit of savings, too, on the energy side, because we are so much more efficient. And now, plus, we're fully updated to that system, and it's easier for ballast, cost price, recycling, hazardous materials, that's a little balance, no more T8s or T12s, and then now we have nice, you know, shiny roof.
Eli, what do you think, district-wide, percent-wise?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
So I know all the elementaries have been done. Only place I think I might still have some fluorescents, or I need to basically get a copy. If we do, maybe it's like some two and those, or that, I think. There's maybe, I don't know, outside's all done, so I think we're like 99% LED now, double the switch.
I think another piece, which is always great to, we were about the LED lights, as well as they don't colors. Century, you know, for children with autism, you can pick up on the dozen from the fluorescents.
Oh, I have one at home that lets you tear it.
Yeah, they're pretty bad. We finished painting the rest of the lockers, so the project Dan Keel, we wanted to finish up. So he did the first floor, and it was two summers ago, or last summer, I can't remember exactly, so. And the same guy came out, did great work, and we painted the rest of the lockers, two different colors, like a grayish color and a purple color, for all the school there, so now it look all sharp, and it was a little bit of a dingy brown color for lockers, so. It was over 860 some locker that they finished up this summer, it's pretty quick. We had kind of an issue on one of the doors here at Jackson, it was supposed to be a handicap door, it was labeled handicap door, and that functioned as a handicap door. It was also the only door in that building that was able to have that, so that was a mullion in the old one, so it opened up, so we had large deliveries, that was the only way to get a hidden building. But when you have something like that, especially in our climate, there's a lot of rust issues. So talking with Forest, who's a company that's worked with us in the past, we decided to do just vertical batches and no center mullion, so it takes out that completely. And we're gonna actually have a handicap accessible door now, so we'll have the button, it'll function as it should function. So it'll be labeled properly, too, on top of it. So yeah, it's a quick project, but this, you know, needed to get done, it was rusty pretty bad in there, too, and it was kind of a... Security-wise, too, it was easy to break. Now it shouldn't be anymore, because it's a pretty big difference, just in the window size, it looks like it matches up now, too. Jackson generator, so I'm not sure how old that generator is, but I wanna say maybe the 60s. It's essentially an old diesel engine. The reason why I want to get this one replaced is, this one's a generator for our main district office, so main servers. Here in this house, we have power outage, this is what kicks on. It still works, you don't really want a diesel generator. So the new generator isn't installed yet, we just got it in two weeks ago, so that's the new one in the center. They're actually starting to put that in tomorrow, there'll be a train here to pick it and put on the roof, and get it all. It should take about 10 days once it starts tomorrow to get it in. We ordered that in February, and it came a week and a half later, so meantime, there was quite a bit. Yeah, so now we'll have, you know, more reliable source for our service here at the district.
I tell you, Eli, terms of the price change and stuff.
Yeah, so I talked to the refrigerator last week, and she said the price is up 40% when we purchased it. I think the total cost of this project was about $47,000 if you already went through, so it would have been closer to, you know, $100 now, but we waited a little longer, just how things are. Those are the main projects we did, so this is more just district upgrades throughout, looking at different areas I want to try to kind of address with the district. One, so in the fieldhouse, you see on the left side, there's no padding on that one wall, but the other wall had it. So we added pads throughout that, I think there was an event where a kid got a concussion running into it, had a little fault, but still, we only have one side padded and one side not, you know, it wasn't construction thing, the reason why I did that, kind of cost savings, so. We added padding, looked great, matches really well, it's perfect, can't tell the difference, might be some, but it's not a bad padding.
I'd explain the, the padding that we put was put on the metal side to actually more sort of protect the metal form. And it was less expensive than putting the brick up higher. It was for the padding, we also did, if you look, there's padding behind the bleachers for in the gymnastics area, because the same reason we don't want people falling down, and it was cheaper to put the padding up on, on plywood than it was to redo the wall.
Yeah, the problem was that there's just not a huge area for this little stuff to stop and brace before they hit the brick. So I was there that day. I mean, it was a little game, nothing stopping.
So everything was great, now it all matches, and the guy did a great job, it didn't all one day, too, we came out, it was 12 already at warm, but.
Parents will be happy.
They're sure they will, yeah.
I think the kids are fine.
So this was a little bit a unique issue, so it gets us been kind of a complaint for a while, but you can see the, on the left, the baseline, the full baseline, so that's the field of play. And so when you put a scorer's table there, you're basically in the field of play. So it was always kind of an issue. So here, what we did, we removed the back two seats of the bleachers, so everything was pushed back. So now the other features, the blue line that used to be under the bleachers, is now quite a bit back there.
Oh, yeah, I can see that now.
Yeah, the blue line there was already now tied anymore, so now you have plenty of room for scorer's table, everyone can walk in front of the whole.
And the players would sit on chairs instead of on the bleachers.
Yeah, that's good.
They already got the padded chairs armed up.
That's nice.
But it's like, it's definitely more better, too, just in general, for game frame, especially basketball and volleyball.
We did lose some seating, but we always had the option for a large event to push the, the freshman creatures up.
Sure, you can all, we did on both sides, the gym only lost two or three seats.
How many?
I think 200, roughly. And because if you pull almost from the back there up, you gain those right back plus up. We've had some pretty big events in there, we haven't had any issue with seating yet, or anyone say anything about no place to sit, so we've been good so far.
Yeah, and since we've moved graduation outdoors.
Yeah. Graduation, but not outside. So we had a, the choir room, what they did is they removed some shelving in there, we got a new shelf. What we did then, they exposed some asbestos tile. So you see there in the middle, that's the asbestos tile that we had to remove, so you've seen kind of the kids, everything off, and there's asbestos waiting there. And then the picture on the far left there, you see the new tile kind of down, somewhat matches, but they got the new, the new shelves all on that back wall. So they have plenty of room to store the music and stuff. The only, the shelves they had were, you know, you can see it wasn't that many, we went, so it was good for them, they had that, it was a quick job. But they made the space a lot better, too, so. Joe's Memorial, I don't know if you saw this last summer, it was kind of a bad shape when he put in just recently, it had a lot of weeds coming up in it. They did mulch in there, they didn't really put a vapor down at all, they moved them coming up. The energy wasn't that great, so what we did was dug all that up, we cut a new line in the back there, dug up that front piece, that was grass, but the grass that it took. Plus, you got salt there, too.
Yeah, the weed rays, yeah.
Kill it anyway, so this guy just, we just dug it out, and you go to the next slide, we put stone in, we got plants in, then everything was donated, too. Dan Keel came in with some students, and they did all the spreading, did an amazing job. And I think there was Jamie and somebody else kind of took the ownership of water and plants during the summer.
Nice, they've been visiting them.
So yeah, so they did a great job, we supplied the hose, there was a bid right outside that wall, so they just, once they came out, it's kind of soaked. Turned out really nice. And checked it recently, there's still no weeds popping up, so we did put a barrier down, too.
And we're supposed to still get another, a white bench, I'll follow up again on that. That, this tree, and I didn't know this until we put the memorial in, but this tree was a memorial tree. Back when I lived, the year it lost three students to the parents, and so they had also made a donation there, so we did have that third white bench there, the students.
This is one, kind of a couple of things here, so we had that, obviously, we got a position we added this last summer. Our current, so we're doing that position, it's Dale Hopey, he's doing a phenomenal job. And what we've been able to do, because of that position, that was a lot more landscaping and care, and kind of beautifying some properties. It's my fault, I did get the forward picture, but those bushes by the windows were actually up above the top window, it was so tall. You couldn't even see out, if you were a teacher in that room, you actually couldn't even see out. And we have a lot of, a lot of acres you have to mull and take care of, so with Dale being added, we've been able to go around, he's been hitting every building, kind of beautifying the property, taking care of the bushes, pulling weeds out, it's been great having him. He's doing an awesome job, so you can see around the buildings, everything's more up kept, and a lot of that's due to him and his work, he's been great at it. The front entryway needed some TLC, so power washed it, scraped away a lot of the chipped paint, and just kind of, you know.
Did you take care of the tile on the...
Looking at how that matches, you can see in the picture, it's all busted.
Because it's been that way for a while.
We didn't have a replacement color, so you'd have to tear all of them out. Otherwise, you gotta see this hot-looking, brown, match blue tile there, so. Obviously, you can't find tile just that big at once, you have that whole bunch of them, so it's, we'll get that, really able to bust all those out, and it should be a different color.
I think our buildings and ground supervisor actually did that project, if I'm correct.
Yeah. Got it, get, take care of, so this one, again, I kind of missed the, I'll give the forward picture, the stairs here in the district were... The stairs here in the district were just horrendous, had a lot of street marks, you know, really dark. Uh, Brian and Kurt did an amazing job, they went through and did all the floors out here, did all the stairwells. Kurt's in the green in the back, he's a new head custodian that we have here at Jackson. Phenomenal guy, uh, does a great job, very animated, positive. So him and Brian took a day and kind of went through and did all the district floors, did amazing jobs. So we're the next one. So you can see the stark difference, uh, from here.
It always looks so nice.
Yeah, it does look good, just kind of wanna highlight that. We did do, so both in our gyms, so the second, Sukie Gym is the same thing, I don't think it fits in both gyms, you only see two floors. Essentially redimmed them. So with the traffic that they get, the amount of sports played on them, it should be done probably every year. Just because of the amount of traffic they get. Uh, these ones haven't been done since the last referendum, I was told, so it's, it's twenty nineteen, we're at the date. So we went through, it obviously take a layer off, and they buffed it, and they put two new layers on top of the floors. So both Sukie Gym and the main Marcy's of the high school have new floors for, for this school year. They look great, really great job. Uh, so this one, uh, that we talked about, or you were informed about the new monitoring throughout the district. So fire monitoring, we only had technically in three buildings. So the high school was monitored, district office was monitored, and options was monitored. Meaning that if a fire alarm was called or an accident happened, no one's coming unless somebody calls, okay? So what happened at Tibbetts, uh, I think it was in February, uh, that coil burst, the hole in that coil there. And it shot about a hundred eighty degree water in the closet, causing the fire alarm in that room to go off. Luckily, you know, our tower was there to have it during the day, so everybody was able to shut the water valve off, closing, we had a minimal damage. So that, when I was called from, from Brian Frost, they asked me, you know, what's happening at Tibbetts? I said, I have no idea, well, the fire alarm's going off right now. And so, so he went there and found out there was no monitoring at any of the schools, including the middle school and the elementarys. So what we did is we had a company come in, now every school in the district has fire monitoring. So if this was where it happened on the weekend, when no one's around, you can be called and respond quickly. So, uh, callers, myself is called first, then Brian Marzal, and the school principal. Then Bill Trump, who's the last on the list, so none of us called him.
I get the caller in trouble.
He may, he may be out, uh, writing funny.
Right. So, you know, keep this from happening again, now we have, we're able to save, save, save it out of the buildings, so some will respond. City here, Pinalco won't show up, or if it's Tibbetts, it's the county, but I'm sure I'm our own spot person or closer than county comes in, so.
Well, they have full-time fire person.
They do?
Right, they do, yeah.
Yeah, so that's kind of a fail-safe now we have that, that's the district. Uh, so on the west side, they had a stage sitting right there. They bought it, gone last year, now we didn't have time last year, so as I said, we'll do it this year. So we moved the entire stage, um, laid new tile down, the wall is painted real well, but they had tables left against it, so couldn't get a accurate picture of it painted. Um, but yeah, they had the tile all laid, that's Brian and George in the background there. Uh, it looks great, Ben's happy, so that's all that matters.
So no stage there anymore?
No stage anymore.
It's been there forever.
I think Joe put it in, when he was, was grounds director, so he put that in.
It was great for Christmas programs, I think it could be moved up a little bit, you know. I'd get someone six foot seven to sit in front of me, Mr. Sukie. And I'd get there early, but then he would put a chair down and sit in front of me.
So they wanted, I think they wanted, they wanted a place for more uh, teachers, and parent volunteers. I guess the city, we're kind of moving on space.
Right.
So that's that. Uh, next slide, we have our at Tibbetts. So they had, before they had a subject system out there, now obviously they're not on the city. They had, when they were initially installed, they didn't have any cleanouts. It wasn't per code back then, or it is now. And we had a lot of issues with backing up happening.
Yes.
Because we had the cleanouts, we like to use pump it, it's gonna fill up real quick, that's the nature of the system. So we had subjects, uh, cleanouts installed on all of the tanks out there. So now we actually rotate our expulsion, there's three fields. So what they'll do is they'll use two at a time, they'll rotate, so one field gets a year off essentially.
Okay.
Uh, and then, that won't happen, because they were complaining about sewage smell a lot. And granted, you're in a foreign field, you're gonna get some of that piss smell anyway. This wasn't the one, this was our own making, so this should help alleviate a lot of that, because now we're gonna get that stuff backing up.
Yep.
That's bad. And uh, we did a great job, it was flip croft and the work, uh, just finished off the last few fields. We did some emergency repairs during the school year to get us kind of through the school. And then they came and finished the summer, um, with the uh, cleanouts added and all.
Which one of the things that's really nice when we have local contractors is, I think Flip Croft was able to go back to the original installer, which would've been Fergus Flum, he still had some plans.
Yep, right, yeah.
They were able to kind of talk.
They had some history valves down there. So he was actually on site, I think you were there that day too, he was there, he kind of was explaining all that, he could go out and score.
Yeah, that's true.
Another addition here, so uh, John Azalone had, and they got some grant money to build this outdoor workout area.
Donation.
Donation.
From the surgery.
Oh, surgery, yeah, yeah.
So we added this, uh, they made it really large, so there's this place for expansion if they need to. Uh, but it's a nice little area, sees people using it already. And then uh, Jason needed a place to put all his pads out of the football fields, so getting up between trees. So we built him a nice shed out there, so to keep things from blowing away or.
I don't think it was just.
Straight to my shed, yeah.
Your name is on the Jason shed. Yes, that's right.
Yeah, so we all pretty football program. We put a black on this, this is for the reason. Uh, Westside Elementary, we had some issues with some of the playground equipment. So this slide is supposed to be straight, it's definitely not straight now, it's very crooked.
Oh, I was just saying, no, it's curved.
It's a twisty.
Wait, you said that one going what?
Vertically, it's not straight.
It's been hot, but not quite that hot.
Had a lot of cracking going on, it just, it was not in good shape, so we got rid of that. And then the middle picture shows that gate gone too, was a backstop, that was a rusty backstop for making kickball or softball or whatnot. So we had our ground crews take that out, and then we added some just stuff in there to keep it safe, so. Uh, this door here, so the handicap button previously was located at the far, I guess it would be the left door. As well, from drought size, it's far right here, which is always locked. That one here is always open, right, that we can buzz you in.
Right, yeah.
So the handicap couldn't use it.
Really?
Right, yeah. So this door here, we do have a wheelchair mount suit, that's gonna be on there.
Okay.
The handicap doors, where it should be, so now when she comes, they can buzzer, she can push the button, it'll open up and you can get through both the main entry and the valve. Uh, that's the door too.
So is the, is that buzzer there on the pillar there on the right?
Correct, yeah, that's the buzzer right there.
Okay.
So she comes out, she can push the button I guess too, but essentially she pushes that.
So how does, how does that secure the, I mean, how is the door?
The door is still locked, it's not buzzer to get in.
Okay, right, okay.
So it's still bad.
But she's got the bell there, it's still down at the far end.
Yeah.
So she has to run to that end and then go on.
They couldn't unlock the far end.
Yeah, someone had to get up, walk, whatever.
Yeah, why did we, I wonder why we originally used that door, maybe because it was less travel.
Probably before we did the buzzing.
Right, right, so it was less travel, yeah.
So I didn't think about it, so.
Right. Okay.
So we had that moved where it ought to be.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's one thing, a little bit explaining, so ninety percent of my custodians in the summertime, they do floor work.
Right.
And then, and I put on here too, like, so just for the summer, the materials for the stripping and the waxing of floors is about fifty-eight thousand dollars that was spent. The capital's alone. That's not including pads, that's not including the machine, those machines go down. And tell you that does include man hours. So again, the man hours on top there was paying eleven thousand dollars, just eleven thousand hours just on man hours alone. Eighteen full-time custodians, that's not including part-time custodians, and all this work, and it's not including overtime. Uh, top of that, enjoy the time, high school, middle school, we come really close to not finishing. Or sometimes they don't finish, just have to like, oh, we're not getting this hallway, or we're not getting this classroom, whatever, spend that time. Because they are dealing with so much traffic, especially high school, middle school, we have summer school programs. And high school is, I mean, it's all year round, overtime, events happen. So it's a lot of stress our custodians to try to get that all organized, figure out when they can do certain areas. And, and it takes, so to do that, it's a lot of work and it's also dangerous. So we've had multiple injuries in the past, of the wood cup claims, so we can slip and fall. Uh, plus with the wood and furniture, you guys have to do a classroom, you gotta take everything out.
Right.
And then you gotta strip the floor, wax the floor.
And then put it back.
And then put everything back, so there's a lot of moving parts involved in that. Um, and then it's what, so my idea here is, well, if you go to LVT versus terrazzo, especially the classrooms, you eliminate a lot of that issue. So for one classroom to get done, that's waxed and stuff, takes about two days, usually you have drying time. And you have two, two coats of wax on top of that. With LVT, you're looking at two or three hours for classroom tops. You can just move all the furniture from one side of the room, whack or scrub that floor, side it over, scrub that floor side. Do some lift too, you don't have to lift, because LVT is not really gonna scratch, if you do scratch it.
Right.
Take that one piece of tile up, put it way at the top.
So the example that Eli has there, that's going down the hallway options.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So as a kind of a perspective too, so I had Judy spend ten days at options, and that's it. She cleaned the whole building in the summertime. So it takes her ten days to deep clean the entire. And she'll go there every Friday, this is due, because we do have people in there still, so we go there every Friday. As far as the deep cleaning goes, it's ten days.
Wow.
Try to finish. So a huge, huge difference.
So it's about, it's about a quarter million dollars in man hours in this summer.
Because we can't do anything about, we, we have the terrazos and we're gonna keep that.
So my idea is, if we just start with the classrooms first, and get those to LVT, that's gonna save one in the district tons of money. Uh, man hours, uh, also worker comp claims, and it's gonna look great too. You can see the floors, they still look nice at LVT, um, they're so easy to maintain and manage.
Yeah.
We don't have as much upkeep as.
So you put it over the terrazzo?
What's that? We don't have terrazzo in the classrooms.
No, I, we're not talking about carrying out terrazzo.
Okay, oh, that's what it was.
Not even talking.
So what is typically in the classroom, just a title?
It's sort of the square.
Twice, yes, okay, okay, yeah, that I don't mind, because I'm thinking there's a lot of history in terrazzo, it's different. And to cover it up is kind of.
There's some areas still would not want to touch, like the attic area, you come in the high school, or downstairs.
Right, right, yeah. Okay.
So you mean it to the high. Like in Westside Tibbetts, it's all.
Yeah, okay, that, okay, that's what you're talking about, because I'm just thinking terrazzo just stands in this district.
And we don't have terrazzo in the classrooms, so.
Right, you're right.
Just doing the classrooms and.
Okay.
Those other areas would just.
Sure, that makes sense.
Another part too, I was looking at a new system that was demonstrated this summer. Instead of having to do this whole stripping and waxing, what they do is they strip it down. It takes a bit of upfront man hours to do it, but afterwards it's real quick. So what they do is they strip it down to the bare terrazzo, and essentially they get these diamond pads, polish it up. And they use essentially a floor polisher instead of wax.
Okay.
And it looks just as nice, and now it's.
Like polished concrete.
Polished concrete.
And less chemicals and get everything to.
Some hours. So we did two test squares for high school in the summer.
Oh, okay.
Tested with, you know. Uh, it's gonna take a little bit to get, because some of the areas are real thick, to relax firmly. So we get to that, but then going forward, once you have that all done, it'll take, you know, further than time to relax. So all you're doing is putting out essentially a wax on top, you just want to have a buffer and that's it.
So then that means you have fewer, um, custodial hours in the summer then.
Well, no, the, you didn't focus on other things, so that's the key, the key point here.
You cocked right away.
Is I wanted them to be able to work up other things besides just floors.
Right.
But we think that needed much summer extra help.
Or something else.
Right. Do you have, I don't need dry time to do that?
So with the, the diamond stuff on the terrazzo, that, it takes, once you're down, it's dry in about fifteen minutes.
Oh, wow.
So then you also like put it on areas for like two days, so now you throw it off for like maybe an hour, and it's already ready to walk. So I don't have to shut down those large portions now either, which will help with coordinating all these events.
Do you have a picture of that, or did you?
I did get a picture of one, yeah.
All right.
So I didn't, I didn't focus it off. But that's kind of the thing I wanted to do, so next summer, I'm gonna plan to use a lot of my, what I have extra in my budget, start getting those floors, those classrooms, to get them with LVT to save on one's man hours insurance.
Makes sense.
And I really think I'll work on it too with the my head custodians, is prevent maintenance throughout the district. Uh, instead of waiting for something breaks, and then have a fire to go put it out. And we're gonna be checking things on the regular to catch those things before they become large issues. The big one is the HVAC, team equipment, some of the kids are gonna be on the playgrounds, uh, bleachers, areas like that. So putting that kind of in mind, like custodians, and the head custodians primarily, they kind of go around, they have their own spreadsheets now, they created for them, to kind of document those areas, they're supposed to check in the daily, weekly, monthly, uh, schedules. To keep everything from not being an emergency, and also save a ton of costs, so they catch it early before it explodes, it'll be a lot cheaper. Go to the next slide, Jason, on this one. Okay, skip, skip to him? Okay, yeah, go to the next one. So here's an example, uh, so we had, uh, Chris Esther, he works for a drill company, he's trying to do our PM, so provided maintenance throughout, uh, the district on our air handlers and chillers. So this is just the, so HVAC or the, uh, air conditioning units. So high school alone, you found twenty-one issues. Normally that number should be fortified, not a normal, they do it twice a year, spring and fall. Uh, he found, and some of these are pretty major issues, uh, stuff being low on coolant, uh, which can add up, pricing, these are leaks somewhere. Catch that early, if your compressor out, if the compressor burns out, those bill bills is at least ten thousand dollars, replace that. So if we catch it early, we can recharge it, find the leak, patch the leak, and now we can spend maybe eight hundred bucks instead of ten, thirteen thousand.
I see, like, one of them is labor units and make a master list, and that's kind of like just common sense, just routine should be done. So this is good, having it all pointed out.
Yeah, so here's some of the issue that he found, this one on the top right here, that's a power line, that's probably like a twelve, oh, sorry, an eight gauge, uh, wire, that was slowly melting its way back, because it was not connected properly in the unit. So it was connected to a four hundred eighty amp breaker, you know, here at Jackson actually. So inside that unit, when you opened it up, it was PM, and you saw it shorting out essentially, so it was melting the rubber coating back roots. And it already started to oxidize, so things been happening for a while. So it wasn't just like an overnight thing, so it's going on for who knows how long. The issue here, if that thing were to arch and blew up, we're looking at probably a hundred thousand dollars to replace that one. It was one of the larger things. So we caught it, was able to fix it, and it actually caused us nothing because it just didn't strike. So it's only that simple, uh, could've been a huge cost to the district if it wasn't that caught. Uh, we also see the two of those holes that are leaking air, so causing both flow alarms. There's a bolt there that's completely broken half. Uh, which is why we're checking through belts, because the vibration was so bad, we kept going through belts so quickly. We found out why, it's because of bolt was sheared off. So, and that motor right there, it's a seventy-five horse powered motor, uh, you can see there, it's starting to go. Uh, so catching that early before it explodes, leaving water everywhere, causing massive alarm. You can catch it, shut it off, bypass it, replace it without having too much serious damage, so. Just doing simple event of maintenance checks throughout the district, really catch so many, this is only a handful. Here too, with the gyms, so the first picture is hard to see, but it's not attached to the wall. The bleacher is actually off the wall currently. So it had this, had a wag to it, so we got to reattach the wall. So if it's simple, we wouldn't have caught it unless we're going around checking, right? And then, uh, per state, we have to check our playgrounds monthly and put in a report, make sure everything's good. So you can see here, we've got some pretty jagged metal. Uh, uh, this is actually a west side here, so we're able to grind that stuff down to sharp edges and probably start recording on that for now, to keep it, so it's not gonna open the kit up when we have tennis issues. So, you know, simple things like this is gonna go a long way, uh, throughout the district to keep us safe, reduce a lot of spending, unnecessary spending. And it's gonna help with oxygen insurance plans, if we're not doing our due diligence and something happens, it's gonna, it's gonna fall back on us, so.
I think this is the most comprehensive report since I've been here. Yeah. That we have ever seen about everything. Yeah. I am very impressed, thank you. Yeah, amazing. And maintenance, we've always talked about having maintenance, and some of these little things that you don't see behind the scenes. I'm sure things were being done, but we've never been, it's never been reported like this to us, so.
I think the one thing that Eli shared is this kind of shifting from this, we gotta put out the fire, whatever. And I, I think the one thing that Eli shared is this kind of shifting from this, we gotta put out the fire or whatever the fires.
Right.
Preventive maintenance. You've seen a lot of invoices for like a Johnson controls.
Right.
Johnson controls maybe means well, but. I shouldn't badmouth Johnson controls, but we've got to technically, it gets really good and fixing some problems, but a lot of times it was just doing that.
And not to get by, right, not getting the.
As opposed to the preventive maintenance that Eli was talking about.
So I kind of changed, initially with the, we had a contract with Johnson controls, it was based on just hours for days' time. So we call, hey, there's an issue, you come out, you fix that issue, go home. It was kind of, it seemed like it was a big contract, but not a whole lot of return on it. So I shifted from that. We still had to use their technology side, because we have messes throughout the district. So we moved away from that, went to a PM style contract to have, now we're checked three times a year. One, twice for the chillers, once for the heating of units. So we get basically torn apart, gone through completely, everything's checked, all the valves are supposed to make sure it's running how it should. So if there's any issues that do happen, they're caught way ahead of time. We were just having tons of money last week, we had four compressors go out, a bunch of motors. A lot of it was because they would just have a slow leak, no one checked the pressures, it slowly drained all the way down to zero and they burned out. So if they were just being checked, we would caught the leak early on, and like I said, we'd be thinking a lot. So trying to help that budget out, help the district down, build, make sure we stay, you know, under that, under that number.
So when you build these, you're not going to help the next person out?
No, you're not.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
We have a handful of resignations. First Kristen Gayhard, we want to thank her for her service. I know she had my daughter, appreciate her moved here and I always appreciate really helped Isabel have a smooth transition over there. So wish her the best as she goes and joins Brookwood, no, or General City.
Brookwood, okay.
Then Rebecca Fleck is a Tibbetts cook, Sarah Guth is a support staff member at Tibbetts, and Angela Woodside is a support staff member at Tibbetts. And Rebecca Reed is a special ed teaching assistant at Tibbetts, or at the middle school, I apologize. Want to thank them for all of their service over the years. Then we have a transfer of Amanda Vigares to Jackson as a special ed teaching assistant, Kate Holman to Jackson as a special education teaching assistant, and Jennifer Harkness to Jackson as a special education teaching assistant. When we have openings within the district, we concurrently post an entry, like extremely, give staff an opportunity to shift from the last deadline. We have the transfer, where did I finish?
Melissa Dodge.
Melissa Dodge.
So what is a teaching assistant specialist?
So they're, they work with a lot of different duties that can vary greatly. More often than not, they're working with small groups of students on specific targeted learning and additional supports, not necessarily, you know, special education students, but students that haven't been identified as having a disability but need additional supports. They'll do supports for teachers, they have a certain allocated amount of time where the teaching assistant can help prep certain materials and so forth. They do resource supervision, just cover a lot of.
Okay.
Some of them do B L services for students.
Oh, okay.
John, we have a transfer of John, Bruce Myersky over to Tibbetts as a custodian, Tracy Valdez to CCA as a special education teaching assistant. Then we have some new hires, Carrie Liga will be joining us as a third grade teacher at Jackson from Williams Bay. Don Umnes is a support staff member at Jackson. Marilyn Delashki is a support staff cook out of Tibbetts. Kristen Hatendorf is a cook out of Tibbetts. Shannon Greetham is a support staff member, teaching assistant at Westside. Cynthia Ravi is a special ed teaching assistant at Westside. Deanna Werke is a teaching assistant at Westside. Jose Reese is a middle school teaching assistant. Eddie Gonzalez is a special ed teaching assistant at the middle school. Deborah Kenyon is a high school cook. Michaela Duffenvatch is a high school special education teaching assistant. Karen Pruden is a Jackson Tibbetts band lesson teaching assistant. Lawrence Orlando is a van driver for the district. Stephanie Nelson is a high school gymnastics assistant coach. Kayla Crane is a high school gymnastics assistant coach, and Lucas Towery is a high school boys assistant coach. We do have, the next we're meeting as well, we'll have some more support staff positions. We're getting close to having all of them built for special education teaching assistants. We had six openings that really were not included on this one. I believe they have three or four of those filmed, I just wanted to do this tomorrow. Which all came in, we sent an email out to all parents, letting them know, hey, and somebody did have a good response.
So it'll be fully staffed?
Primero, yo, it's the same use in Spanish. We also, I have a resignation coming out that there may be internal shifting to that position. I don't want to be pre-retired now since they had the letter, and then that will probably mean that we got to scramble the plane, more T-shirt.
Yeah.
In a couple days.
Better than the two hundred and forty in an M P S house.
Yeah. And we'll meet with the bus company tomorrow, they're still in need of drivers. If anyone's out there listening that would like a morning, afternoon gig, I believe there's, last week we talked about four driver positions, so she's just. So, yeah, it's tight for, tight for us as well. I think we'll get there. It helps if we start, in a way. Yeah, I saw that Madison still had a hundred and fifty-five teaching positions.
Yeah, wow. And the S was up to two forty, just teaching?
That's just teaching. So I can imagine how many support staff positions.
Yeah, it's just teaching.
Alright, that's all I have for personnel.
Any comments?
I moved to personnel recommendation sheet for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second and two, for the personnel recommendation sheet for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check in district.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gator?
Epstein.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
So we've got any school gifts?
No, she has to, for tonight.
Just go on to crisis plans.
Alright. It is, once every three years, we need a formal approval of the Alcorin area school leadership crisis plans. There's a Google copy of all of our crisis plans. We did add a cardiac emergency response protocol to that. Other than that, there's been no significant adjustments over the last couple of years. These were developed in partnership with, I consulted several years ago, we put all of these together.
I did have a question though. On, I'm trying to find the exact one, I think it was. It was about. If there was a intruder or.
Extruder.
Extruder or intruder. And it lists what each individual, like category of people is responsible for doing for each one. But it, does it, I didn't see that it really, like, it, most of them all required calling, the first thing was calling nine-one-one first. So does that mean that there's multiple people calling nine-one-one? If there's, or is there some kind of a hierarchy? I just wondered.
Principal, if it doesn't be responsible? No, it's, it very well could be and should be multiple people calling nine-one-one.
I see, might have different.
Because they're providing different information.
Okay, right, okay. Alright.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Accompanying with this, we use for our intruder and our extruder piece, we use the FEMA run height fight protocols.
Okay, right.
By FEMA, and our employees go through it. It's a video training refreshment that each year.
Okay.
So depending on, and so we want that to be at the, you know, at the forefront or there. We don't want them to have to go and pull up the protocol and look at it, we want to know, okay, it's run height fight, it's simple protocol. Not that it's necessarily a simple decision at that point, that's why I never aren't chair quarterback with U C N incident happen at the national level. I hate seeing that happen because all you can do is have the trust of the teachers and employees to make the best decision and judgment that they possibly can from that. Training, we do tabletop exercises. We purposely don't do live. How do we put it? We'll do walkthroughs, but we don't do like simulations or scenarios. I know my wife was involved in one and it got so, and she actually broke a rib because she was in between the door and the table that they slammed because they had people going through with darts that they would shoot at them with, that they chucked by power round, to simulate the, the loud gun sound and.
Wow.
She was very, it was really rough for her to hold a, it was very traumatizing.
It can be traumatizing to go through it, but to be that realistic, right.
And then there, the district in Illinois that did a, you know, they taking the training very serious, getting, putting the kids out the windows and the teachers, and they had numerous employee count cleaners.
Yeah.
From the one drill, because they had injuries all over. So they've seen it now with the high years, so we go through that. In addition to the training, then we ask all teachers to keep this bookmarked. You'll see, this is my bookmark right here, that they always have it right away.
Got it. Okay. Cool. You know, there's another thing called, I think it's called Alice or something, it's like five steps instead of the three. We actually had at CISA, a, what do you call it, federal, I can't think what they're called. For security, I can't think what it's called. But he said, Alice, he likes the simple, three step that we use, yeah.
Because it's easier to remember.
It's easier to remember. It's kind of like, he goes, do you remember stop, drop, and roll? Does that remember? He used that as an example, everybody knows what that is. So he said, this is the way to do it.
Yeah, Alice is like, I don't even know.
I can't even remember what it was, yeah.
Locate, I can't.
Something, yeah, but.
And we actually reached out to Alice when we were adopting MOCO, we can give them a chair on MOCO.
I thought, I think the school board association had a program where you could sign up for Alice recently. I remember looking at that and that, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, but it's the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management, so I think they do their due diligence, they work with Secret Service.
Right, and that's, that's the guy came in.
They're in charge to use.
Yep.
Go through this, reading the pandemic for a class.
I know, I know.
Can I ask you a question?
I know.
In this respect, do we have trauma kits in any of the schools?
Do we have?
Like a trauma kit, so like, do we basically use like?
Well, exactly, this is what's the, yeah, what's the, they have. Trauma kits and stuff.
Yeah, so they're located in there.
And I think catheter was, was still sort of.
I wondered that myself, maybe that's a bad feeling.
In fact, you know, some of this, I don't want to, certainly don't want to make light of this, some of these rumors that went out from politicians about schools having litter boxes in their.
Oh, for free?
After Sandy Hook, the recommendation was trauma kits in every classroom.
Yeah.
That would go in a five gallon bucket that you would put in the bottom litter, catheter. Because if you were to have a lockdown or an incident like that, the kids would have to be isolated in the classroom for hours.
Right.
And so it was designed so that they could use that bucket to go to the bathroom or emergencies. So I could see someone misconstruing that, I don't know where the hell it came from, but there may be some of those kids still that, we just don't have. We don't, we don't have those in every classroom.
Yeah, I ran into this because I did first year founder training at work with, got over fifty people trained, and one of the people was from Oak Creek School District, and they have trauma kits and you say, they said, this is what's in our trauma kit, and you said, you're missing a bunch of stuff. And they, they actually have, they made trauma kits and sold them as part of fundraiser, but they, they have them in every, every classroom. Yeah, and it's, it's a trauma kit, it's compression pad, it's all stuff for like active shooter.
Right.
That's what's in there, it's not Band-Aids.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions on the crisis plans?
I, I was just going to ask, I know we visited last year and the year before and things haven't changed that much. We had Narcon supplied to the district. And we, we always questioned about when the students go out for lunch or whatever, and they return, if they were together and doing something, and one went to the business wing and one went to the music wing and one went to the CTE wing and stuff. Do we have enough in availability and is it located well enough to meet any needs that would occur like that?
I would have to follow up with Mrs. Trotter and.
Okay.
My initial response would be, I believe so, because she has the ability to get more Narcan if she felt like there was a need for that. But I'll have to follow up with her and check on that. But I know we, we do have the packs on the walls that are typically by the A E D machines. You're right, there's probably not, I mean, we don't have an A E D machine on every one of those entrances of high schools.
We just had Narcan in every classroom, middle school, high school.
I don't know if they'll give us that many, I don't know.
Open arms is posting right now that they'll give it to anybody that walks in the door and asks for it.
Alright, I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, or at least, you know, that the, the staff is familiar as to where the closest location is to get it, because times of essence at that point.
Yeah.
You can't do that if you're giving it to somebody else.
Can you just verify that the A Ds are on a monthly PM for batteries and the, you know, the pads, you know, expire after a certain time. The machines themselves expire after a certain time.
Yeah.
Because I, where I work, three machines were not supposed to be used. So this is something that, you know, you need to set up.
Yeah. If you don't use them, like we're starting to do some maintenance, so this is.
Yeah, checklist.
Check, yeah.
They do, yeah, I, I'll follow up on that as well. They do have a little alarm, though, the batteries lower that timeframe, but I'll, I'll follow up on that.
My other question, maybe this isn't for discussion right now, but what's in the go bag that's supposed to run?
So the, the go bag is when we have to evacuate as well offsite, so it would include items that are needed from organizational standpoint to reunification with the families and students. So we have a part here that we would load, I purchased all the things from the pit and everything put together that would throw in the white truck and go to the unification site for the families and tables to set up, signs. You know, people were further checking out and so forth in case we don't have the access to the A D for some reason, it probably go down. Our preference is with Black Swan and that contract, they have, they have a whole system that we get up all the right way, that they'll have a call center and where parents can update information and so forth, where we can have a number published for.
So it's just information?
It's just, yeah, the go bags are just all these materials and supplies and they actually have it in the crate downstairs. It shows, yeah, the go bags are just all these materials and supplies, and they actually have it in the crate downstairs. The schools also have go bags. To take, where they have megaphones, yeah, so their, their go bags, although we have megaphones and certain Yeah. And those are kept in house. You have any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the upper area school district crisis plans as presented.
Is there a second? Second. So move to the second into the draft, or accept the district's emergency response crisis plans as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
I would add on, in relation to the crisis plans, we do a threat assessment, whenever, whenever there's a threat that's made, we do a student or a concern, and oftentimes it's through our safety belt system, we do a, we follow the entire team together, our S R O officers, the administration, counselors, social workers. And we go through a protocol which is developed by Secret Service and the FBI, and we go through that, do that assessment, then identify investigative needed, follow up with the family, set in protocols and structures of support for the individual student. We then, every trimester, the team gets together and reviews how all of the students are doing. The last one that we did was shortly after the Wilday school shooting, and we felt, you know, because anytime there's a significant event like that, there's a lot of clamoring in the community towards the politicians and so forth, hey, do this, do this, do this. We felt, I invited Senator Nass and Representative August and Representative Amy Lamback, but she was running for Secretary of State, so she wasn't there, her, but Senator Nass and Representative August were very gracious and very you know, so they came and attended our meeting, we wanted them to see the process, what we go through, what the schools are providing, the sports and so forth, and just had that invitation that is working on legislation or different components to, you know, reach out to us as it's related to that. And one of the pieces that we've done twice was a school safety audit. The last one we did was in two thousand and eighteen, we were gonna do another one, but the pandemic threw that off, but I'd like to get that scheduled today through the Association of School Safety, and they come through to independent auditors, and they do a great job of walking through and interviewing everyone, checking our buildings, and giving us a list of what to improve on or what they found, so. The last audit we had was a, I mean, it was a very positive, they were very extremely impressed, but they always have things to look at, just like from a financial audit, so that's something else that I'm getting down, like, if I'm report back on that. No, just, do we have a closed session? And, yeah, that's it.
Can you send me a link for that, Jason?
Yeah, I'll send you a link, pause.
Okay, thank you.
I move to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five point one A to discuss readmission of a high school student, the school board will not recommit in a closed session.
So move to second to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one A to discuss readmission of a high school student, the school board will not recommit in a closed session.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.